How you doing?
How you doing?
I'm alright. How's your juice? Need a hammer?
Yeah.
I need you to do something. Oh, no. It's okay. What are the fries for? She's, uh... She's officially on time. She's officially on time. I'm sorry, I didn't intend that. She literally is officially on time. Not feeling bad?
Yeah.
You came prepared?
Listen.
Right. Are these really KIAs?
Yeah.
They should have had a larger workshop.
Yeah, so...
Well, they won't go a foodie, they won't go a foodie, lay out this right here. So if they're gonna talk about... They'll talk about... Talk something that puts them... And they're very, they're very detailed. Okay. Like they're calling at a board workshop. Whether that's a buddy or... They're probably budget workshops, but we got one in August.
Do you remember now? We, we might, I don't think, we just raided it over the last...
Yeah, and then the regular meeting on the 21st. Eighteen to twenty-first in August. And then August ten-second. So we got... I always need to... Break one.
How's it going? Running around? There was something I wanted to say. I was gonna say, yeah. I'll do a change there. I mean, I generally believe we have this different person. It was like, straight up, hey. Just said my part on all of her tires.
Great group assignment. I'm talking on my head. I don't want to talk on my head.
Misty's running more, Jen. Jen, Misty's running more.
Come on, show him.
Jerry.
Um, what is your buddy? The Polish. Can you be there like you have your roots in Ohio? Quarter till, uh, six or five.
Yeah, just, uh, have this...
Something. Bring a phone. Man, throw some, throw some times.
I'm sorry?
Bring a phone.
Okay.
Right twenty-one.
Okay.
Yeah. Fuck my home last. Well, I, I didn't... I am going to get some...
Whether there's...
So, yeah. So we need to develop... Actually, my camera, I think. It's pretty good. And I, I just put it there for ten minutes. Give me...
I was thinking about that the other day.
I did it before. He says that it's like a... I don't remember really.
That's good.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is eighteen thirty-three, I hereby call this Council meeting here. She line them to order. Let the record reflect the following council members who are in attendance. Councilman Arborough, Councilman Rodriguez, Councilman Nielsen, Councilman Patton-Phus. The rest, as you record, also reflect the following council members are absent. Councilman Williams and Mary E. U. For section two-two dot O three-nine of the local government code form, how can establish a fourth for this meeting? Before we start, councilman, I'd like to remind each member of you and staff and not staff, council, if you have a question, please wait till they hit the mic and speak into your mic so you online people can hear us. Great group.
It's on the Veterans Memorial. I have some updates. Do you want that now or at the item? Either one's fine. So you can, council, first let me proceed by saying thank you for all your hard work. You guys have been, yeah, seeing you guys up here putting in a lot of long, hard hours. Volunteer, most council members volunteered just for the time that they've come here to do this and review documents, but you guys are going way above and beyond some of you. Thank you. People see it. It's appreciated and your communication is absolutely stellar, so thank you. For the Veterans Memorial, I've talked to some people involved with scouts that have previously done Eagle Scout projects and solicited donations to get that funded. There is one that actually did the Joshua one and he's willing to provide input. We know there's no local scout troop here. They want to establish a scout troop here, but there's other scouts that may be interested in. Also, the military border of the Purple Heart is interested in getting involved in it. They assisted with the Joshua one. I have a meeting with them on the last Saturday of the month in Burleson, so hopefully I'll have more information on them. But they have basically paved the way with Joshuas, talking about how to raise money for it. Joshuas was a hundred percent funded. It did take some time and it will take a lot longer to do that if you decide to fundraise opposed to fund it, but there's a lot of options to do it. One thing they did say is that the one who did Joshua originally was gonna do Godley's, but Godley already had one. That's the existing one that's in disrepair. They did say that there actually is a very, very, very small amount of KIA's with these local towns, these smaller towns in Johnson County. They chose to do Johnson County KIA, so that's something they considered. They felt that there would probably only be a few names. I don't know that. Like I said, I know Richard here at the school has that wall of honor. He probably has more insight on that, but anyways, thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
Michael Scandiano. Probably Richard, I should miss him. Shenatiko.
Shenatiko. I just wanted to say thank you all for all the hard work that you put in to reiterate what Greg is saying. One thing I would like to say is again, please take time for yourselves. This is a volunteer position. Don't forget your families. Don't forget, take time for yourselves and don't get stressed out over this. I will be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shenatiko.
Eliza Duncan. Anna Reyes. Steve Staples. Tony Brown.
Excuse me. I know that you guys are not required to answer questions, but I'm gonna pose one. I was wondering if there's been any talk of decreasing the speed limits on one-seventy-one and also as you come into town on nine-seventeen? If not, something to consider, especially as the high school expansion happens and the public. I know this is not a city of Godley thing, but it has to be coordinated with the county and the text roadways and all that good stuff, but I know that's probably pretty low on the priority of this right now, but I see many, probably many more accidents in our future with this great expansion. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
At this time, we will close public comment. We do have two public hearings.
All right, for the, uh... For the June, we had a total of two-hundred-and-thirty-three trap stops resulting in forty-five citations, two-hundred-and-eight warnings. We had two-hundred-and-forty-five calls total. It was on one accident, seventeen alarms, twelve ACO calls, one family violence arrest assault, one burglary of a building, one child neglect. We also had twenty-nine co-concursant complaints that went down, so that's a good thing. We had three disturbances. One drug offense resulting into one arrest. With that arrest that we arrested, we were able to do a trap stop on it with a vehicle search that resulted in over fifty-plus crimes of TSC baked in. And the gentleman was also carrying a loaded weapon with him as well. We had one DWI arrest, one driving on a bus in a battle arrest, two fraud cases, ten follow-ups, one illegal dumping, two missing person reports. Both people were found and recovered, but all safely. Two public talks, twenty-five suspicious persons or vehicles, four thefts resulting into twenty-seven thousand, three-hundred-and-thirteen dollars in AICs stolen. We recovered fifteen thousand, five-hundred of it. The both were covered with the fire vehicles. They are back at the warehouse. We had eleven vehicle searches, again, one weapon offense.
So you say the, I was interested in the twenty-seven thousand dollars that the, that the fire trucks reported at twenty-seven?
Yes, yes, sir.
I have a discussion of possible action regarding lawsuit, Jennifer Thompson versus City of Gattin. Cause number three, two, three, CD one, four, four, one. Make a motion, no action, second. Have a motion in a second.
Aye.
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 Aye. I am the discussion of possible actions regarding EEOC complaint, Solomon Almontoya versus City of Gattin, number four, five, zero, dash, two, zero, two, three, dash, zero, two, six, eight, eight.
Thank you motion, we will come to the next meeting, eighteen, year, second.
Again, a motion in a second. But, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. As a unanimous link. And these are given, then, on the discussion of possible action on accepting a donation slash gift from data partner for a wall handle slash banner for the city of Gattin. Item D, discussion of possible action on accepting a donation slash gift from a data partner for a ball handle slash container for the City of Gobbie, part of Station One. Make a motion to postpone this until the eighteen.
Sir.
You got a motion and a second?
Aye.
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 Aye, postpone until the eighteen unanimously. Discussion of possible action on accepting the city secretary's resignation, I have three of these. Don't want to swear. To the main adjutant, I, Captain, hereby resign effectively immediately. Resign effective immediately at eight seven six twenty twenty here.
Make motion to accept the secretary's resignation.
Have a motion to accept the resignation as presented. Second.
Second.
You got a motion and a second?
Aye.
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 Aye, passage unanimously. I have a discussion of possible action on accepting the court clerk's resignation. To the main adjutant, I, Carolina White Hernandez, resign effectively immediately.
Motion to accept the court clerk's resignation.
Got a motion to accept the court clerk's resignation as presented.
My second.
Motion and a second.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, passage unanimously. Discussion of possible action on approving a city W S N O calendar.
Make motion to postpone this item until the eighteen, July eighteen meeting.
I got a motion to postpone until the eighteen?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to postpone until the eighteen?
Aye.
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 Aye. Unanimously. I have an age discussion of possible action on a resolution calling a special election on November seventh, twenty twenty three. To fill the vacancy of the mayor and one council member in authorizing the execution of a contract with Johnson County Elections Division to administer said election.
Make motion to postpone item H until the eighteen, meeting July eighteen meeting.
I got a motion to postpone until the eighteen?
Second.
Got a motion and a second?
Aye.
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 Aye, passage unanimously. I have a discussion of possible action on the employment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer, city administrator.
Make motion to postpone item I until the eighteen of July.
Second.
I got a motion, I have a second, I miss the one.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, passage unanimously. Item J, discussion of possible action on the employment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer, city secretary.
Make motion to postpone item J to July eighteen meeting.
I got a motion?
Second.
Yes, second.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, passage unanimously. Discussion of possible action on the employment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer, court clerk.
Make motion to postpone item K to July eighteen meeting.
I got a motion?
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the eighteen, second?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, passage unanimously. Discussion of possible action on the employment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer, administrative assistant.
Make motion to postpone item L until the seven eighteen, July eighteen meeting.
I got a motion for the eighteen?
Second.
Got a motion to postpone until the eighteen, then say it.
Aye.
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 Aye, passage unanimously. Discussion of possible action to purchase heavy duty, extra large, dump trucks.
Motion to postpone item M until the July eighteen meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second to postpone until the eighteen?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed unanimously. Discussion of possible action regarding a certified animal control officer or a certified existing officer interested.
Motion to postpone item M until July eighteen meeting.
Second.
Got a motion to postpone until the eighteen?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passed unanimously. Discussion, I approve a discussion of possible action of removal of past directors, replacement of new directors to the four B Economic Development Committee.
Motion to postpone item O until the July eighteen meeting.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to postpone until the eighteen?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed unanimously. Discussion, I approve a discussion of possible action using four B funds for city park remodels, such as curb, splash pad, equipment upgrade, veterans memorial, and other needed improvements.
Motion to postpone item P to July eighteen meeting.
Second.
I got a motion and a second to postpone until the eighteen?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimously. Item Q, discussion of possible action to purchase weatherproof trash cans for city park, commercial toilet paper dispensers, commercial soap dispensers, and soothing, commercial hand sanitizer units.
Motion to postpone item Q to July eighteen meeting.
Second.
I got a motion and a second to postpone until the eighteen?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed unanimously. I have a hard discussion of possible action regarding the creation of a city holiday slash events committee.
Make motion to postpone item R until July eighteen meeting.
Second.
I got a motion and a second to postpone until the eighteen?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed unanimously. Item S, discussion of possible action regarding contracting with defending service for a snack drink machine for city hall lobby.
Make motion to.
You make a motion?
Yes.
I would like you to direct staff to reach out to defending services. I make a motion to direct staff.
Sir.
Reach out to defending services. Got a motion?
Second.
And a second?
We're probably need to postpone and second motion. Or be more.
Reaching out. Follow them in, we motion to direct staff to reach out to different vending services and bring it back at the July eighteen meeting. Got a motion and a second?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, motion passed unanimously, good direction. Item T, discussion of possible action on the approval of pricing for walker for access control system. I got thirty minutes left.
Make motion to postpone item T until July eighteen meeting.
I got a motion? I have a second.
Second.
I got a motion and a second, I would like to discuss. So this is what I have. Do they are going to be charging? It is a fifteen hundred dollar project pricing to have them come out and provide site surveys and design for our access control system.
Hold on a second, I'm looking for.
So this just uh, this is for the amount of the survey. If we don't use them, we owe fifteen hundred dollars, what we do is if. We'll pay fifteen hundred dollars if we credit towards the amount for the control system. If we don't use them, we're out with fifteen hundred dollars.
Are you looking for a motion to approve the fifteen hundred to spend?
If we want to move forward with this, yes, so they can come back out and do the site surveys.
How many a motion to spend the fifteen hundred dollars for the site assessment?
Second.
I got a motion and a second to approve the fifteen hundred dollars for walker for the site surveys.
Aye.
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 Passage unanimously. Item U, discussion of possible action approving zoning change regarding an application of Tony Ryan requesting amendment to the Gobbie zoning code to amend zoning designation of approximately point one seven eight acre tract real property currently located at three oh three North Main Street, Gobbie, Texas, Johnson County. In more particular, we describe a lot one R J block five three flat of the town of Gobbie, in addition to the City of Gobbie, Johnson County, Texas, in the district R one residential single family to district R two residential multifamily. To allow the use of said property in accordance with said multifamily zoning district as provided in the Gobbie zoning code into amendment to the city's zoning map to reflect said zoning changes.
Make motion to deny, item U, it's a danger. No, sorry, I got.
I have a motion and a second to deny item U as presented.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passed unanimously. Item B, discussion of possible action determining ordinance regarding a voluntary renovation of extract of land being seventeen point six seven one acres situated in the McInney and Williams survey. Abstract number six three four in the W R Hooker survey, abstract number four two four, Johnson County, Texas, and being part of the call twenty four point one four four acre tract described in the E to Gobbie properties LLC. Also being extracted land zero point seven one four acre tract situated in McInney and Williams survey, abstract number six three four in the W R Hooker survey, abstract four two four, Johnson County, Texas, and being all of Sloan Circle, A P P, put. Right away, as shown on the flat Hooker edition, in addition to Johnson County, Texas, according to the platter, recorded in volume eleven, page seven nine zero of the platter of Johnson County, Texas. Property in generally located south of Texas Highway one seventy one includes Sloan Circle and property east of Sloan Circle, Johnson County, Texas, the property owner is Gobbie property to LLC.
I make a motion to approve the ordinance regarding the annexation.
All second? I got a motion and a second?
Um, discuss this for a second.
Discuss, we got twenty eight minutes.
Normally I would be for extending the city out. See, this is in D C J at this time, if you don't bring it in the city and do what Mr. Mashin gave us, well, and I had Mashin, if it ended up doing what he said, it'd be great, I hope we don't. But if I'm what we're looking to put that being that it is in N C J, I don't believe. Like the growth part of the. That'd be a center regroup.
Need further discussion? Okay, got a motion, the second group is presented.
Second. Aye.
I'll go for it, aye.
Aye, three ayes, passes one exception.
So we want to talk about our next meeting?
Do we want to use one of the some of the bad ones? If we have children, share that.
I talked about the dog, yeah. Okay, please.
Okay, twenty minutes to talk about.
Well, we don't care about the goat on it.
Do we have to make a motion untabled or?
So.
I make a motion to untable the animal control.
What technically is postponed?
First one.
Okay. I would lose the open up for discussion. Alright, um, so we're ready to move on before you.
So I'm gonna make a motion to open up the discussion on how again, discussion of possible action regarding a certified animal control officer or certified existing officer.
Sir.
Got a motion and a second?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed unanimously. Item, yeah, item, discussion of possible action regarding a certified general control officer or a certified existing officer interested.
So I just want to talk about, um, I don't want to do that occasional talk as he's passing my yes. Alright.
So on this item, it's a pretty big issue that every city here in Johnson County has had it. Uh, one of the issues that we're having is that Johnson County's open leash law. And a lot of people are dumping, putting off. Unfortunately, they're government off here. And a lot of cities now have a, in this city Gobbie, it's grown enough where they have a code of proportion slash A C O officer. They don't have to be licensed police officers, but they work under the umbrella of police department. And that's what a lot of cities are feeling at. So that's something that we need to look forward to doing is actually certifying a code of proportion slash A C O officer.
In lieu of one of your office.
Yes. Yeah.
So it'd be adding another person to the staff.
Yes, yes, ma'am. And that being said, we need to figure out how to place kennels, or shelter for the animals. Because the issue is now, if an officer is certified doing this, he captures a dog, and he's taken it to where we have to take it, and he uses one of the control cars. He now has to be too detailed that control car, we cannot have an animal in there, take the animal to a shelter, and he come pull some order makes him arrest. It's huge T P O violation, and we'll get fined.
And I think, uh, I don't, we kind of catch on, the, we got an old animal control truck, says we could possibly take the kennel off of it and place it onto a new truck, because the one that it's on, Tom, running. But we could take it off of there, do a lot of footmen, so that would cut down the outfitting cost of the vehicle.
We can, yes, ma'am.
So we would just need to buy, uh, need a truck?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Doesn't have to be a top line truck. Just needs to be a truck to be able to put its equipment back there, and load these animals up. The big thing is if, uh, clinic that would use Ranberry, they're raising their prices. So it's like three hundred dollars plus for a state dog.
And don't they visit their whole time very little before they.
Pretty much.
And they euthanize?
They euthanize.
Could we use an officer and save the city and the staff?
You can.
But.
But if that all depends on how much you would certify doing this. Because if these officers work nights, I'm gonna be on call if there's an animal issue.
Oh, you're saying it can't be at the same time?
Can't be at the same time, so you have to certify multiple officers. Because that can't rely on the officer covering the shift, and then do calls the next morning, he's working night shift, going at six a.m., eight o'clock in the morning, get called wild dogs. Especially to get up and get out there.
So if we had one, they would just be on call, or how would that work?
If we certi- if we certify one, that's something I have to look into, what, how he's gonna be on call, how we're gonna use him. Because again, he tells you the shift, police officer shift. So our shift, course six P six A, goes home, gets, starts getting asleep, and he gets a call at eight o'clock in the morning, it's a bunch of wild dogs. He's the only certified A C O officer that can use tranquilizer gun or tracks to certify to do it. You're asking a lot for one person to do it.
But soon he gets the call between, in his, in his regular shift, and he go take care of that call and then come back?
He can.
What'd you have, Roger? Do you want to discuss something?
I want to. I start with.
Thank you, sir. Uh, if you're lucky, you might have.
I start with my brother. He's been a animal control officer for City Fort Worth, in Ran City, Baroson for a while. He worked for the state, he certified, uh, kennels, designed kennels for different cities. And I thought my problem, the immediate need was to get rid of dogs that are wild. Uh, get a kennel, get the dogs certified, takes a long time. Any city employee can work in a, in a, and take care of the animals under certain conditions. Number one, he can't do it more than fifty percent of his day. He can pick up, basically what I was looking at, do five kennels. He can pick up, basically what I was looking at, do five kennels. Get a hold of a homeowner, a homeowner in the area that the dog could be a nuisance in. City employee goes, sets the kennel up in the man's door with his permission. When the dog is caught, the man, or the animal is caught, he gets a phone call the next morning, next day, he does not, not a little, not a call, cause then he ends up going over his daily allotment. He can then pick the animal, the cage up, all these people at the time, take the cage with the animal to wherever we are going to take the animal to, uh, Ranbury, uh, wherever we set a river of Joshua. And we can take care of the immediate issue right then, that was a limited amount of time, money, and work. It's not gonna catch wild dog, whoever is designated to do it, he cannot tranquilize a dog, he cannot catch a dog with a loop. All he can do, when the dog is already caught and is into a cage, pick the cage up and transport it. That might have to be pulled immediately, who are having the, in the neighborhoods with the dog problems.
So, all they can do is set a trap, eat trap dogs, and take them.
Take them to wherever we have a agreement with, we used to have a river of Joshua, I don't know if we, I doubt we have anymore.
I think it's from Ranbury, that's what he was saying.
Yeah, we, Ranbury, uh, we've already contacted Joshua, their animal patrol, their animal shelter is not big enough.
I know, most of them are, most of them, no, not many people accept them out there, that's gonna be another issue to have. But, if you set the traps with the homeowner permission, and the homeowner would then have a call and just would say, hey. And it has to be understood that, if the dog gets caught two o'clock in the morning, starts barking, we cannot be, the city cannot be there till eight o'clock that morning to pick him up. And the guy cannot spend more than four hours a day actually handling that, but it can be done. He doesn't have to take any special training, he has to do anything. It'll take two people to pick up the cages and move it around, you don't want one person doing that.
So, we don't have, how many of that, that you would really?
We don't, we don't have, uh, we don't have anything to need right now.
I mean, but like, even if we hire, we can send a city administrator out there.
No, it'd be somebody from Fort Worth, or maybe the policeman with him, just to pick it up, transport it wherever you go, drop it off, and come back, and they don't worry about pickups. City pickups. That's just a quick way to get rid of the animal problems that are causing nuisance now, not long term, uh, uh, not long term fix, it's just immediate. You get something going on with the people that are having problems with, with the, uh, nuisance system.
How about, um, I guess, if it's a nuisance dog. It's not gonna matter what happens, if it's collared or not collared, what's the law on that, chief?
It's, uh, city ordinance violation, nuisance dog.
No, I mean, if we take an animal that's collared to a shelter, and it can't get a hold of, you know, owner there out of country, wherever, and then the dog gets killed, I guess, what's the liability for the city to be?
Their responsibility, if they're taking care of their dog, the liability's not much on the city grounds, not so happy owners.
Yeah.
But it's their job, you take possession of ownership of dogs, you're trying to take care of it.
And if you go into a neighborhood, you put signs up, saying, hey, dogs are being caught, because of nuisance in this neighborhood, Facebook, uh, city website.
Yeah.
Signs, uh, in the neighborhood. The lack of litigation of the, the property dogs, when you own, unless you get somebody to tranquilize, tranquilize them, unless you get somebody to throw, you're not necessarily gonna catch the perfect, but you know, as many dogs as you want for the lease, we'd be doing, we'd be catching some dogs.
My concern is, we're sending unqualified people out to build to get dogs that are caged or gunned packs. Who knows how they're gonna act, cage animals at that point?
Well, that's part of the, you don't just grab them with your hand, you, the cages have to have a bar or something, like we run a bar through, pick them up, slide them on the trucks. So, you're not getting close to them, that's why you need these two people doing it. It doesn't, I just say, this is, that's the way to get the, the issue that we clear, gets up and going. Otherwise, we're gonna be, how long are we gonna get it certified, and get everything else we need installed, set up, and since we don't have the budget, how long is that gonna take?
Classes, first classes for days, then on, uh, we'll get the equipment in, definitely split the budget really, unless you have money.
And then hire a overdue employee, benefits, payroll taxes, et cetera.
And Roger's idea is it's quick, it's not, it's like a band-aid, but it could work for now.
So, the way you're describing it, is that considered performing the duties of an animal control officer?
Uh, we've done it before, the way, we was talking about Chief Hughes here, that's one way we, we did it, we also used to shoot dogs, but, yeah, that's it. Or I'm gonna do that now, that was a path through, but, uh, it's not really performed as a certified A C O officer. Like I said, it's a, it's a band-aid to follow the basic. Uh, Johnson County is in the process, process of building a regional animal shelter, that's five years downward, but it's in, it's in talks, cause I said, we're not the only city facing this issue. Every city, problem is, it's grown so quickly, for so long, people are just dumping their dogs. Now that these lands are being sold, doing building, well, these dogs used to be there, so, so they're used to, but the wildcat ridge issue, that started off with, to a priest, right, now it's starting to, all back.
There's nobody that does that protection, he comes out and catches a lot of dogs, there's no way you're gonna. I like it as an interim solution.
What is that long-term issue?
An A C O officer. We can't have this kind of growth in the city and not be prepared, and keep thinking that we're going to make this run on this small amount of personnel. It's not easy, it is just not easy. I mean, we have to look, we can't be short sighted here, when we deal with the, what's coming, with this many, um, subdivisions. Like you said, we have, we have all, you know, there's a problem in this county wide, and we're gonna keep on with this problem. So, I agree, that is a good short-term fix, especially for this one dog problem that we have. But we also need to look long-term, and are we gonna budget this year, or are we gonna budget next year? Are we gonna use an officer we already have, or we just need an A C O, we need to also budget a truck? I mean, all these things that need to be discussed now, because we're just gonna, the dog issue, animal issue, they're just gonna just keep coming. But I agree to look, I agree, it is a great short-term fix, and let's get these dogs out of the neighborhood, help these people. Um, I did submit one of the kennel deals, where I could find some large kennels, they're not gonna be heavy, dirty, heavy duty, commercial, but they are the only ones that I were, I was able to find with that size that was readily available, where we could buy some. And get this problem temporarily taken care of.
How could we think about certifying a public works guy, and just using that same method, you know, can't, if he works eight to five, and that's it, he can't catch, can't come out and get the walking dog until that next morning, but we've got him. And then we don't have to have the extra employee, cause I think you're gonna run into that anyway, I mean, unless the A C O is somehow twenty-four hours on call, is that the deal?
Yeah, that, you have to look at all this ground city people are doing, they're creating Joshua, for example, they created their own A C O department, have it on code force department. This isn't ground city, this is something, like Missy said, we can start looking forward, towards that. And you may not need this budget, or budget not relevant, either.
How many A C Os do Joshua have?
A C O's have at least two or three.
I was a part of the city when that, um, animal shelter came, person, and, uh, it was, it's a lot, a lot that goes into it. We're very lucky to have the staff that was educated enough and did a lot of research on that, that's when that thing was built, but, um, I mean, they did a good job when they, when, that's when we needed it. Essentially, I mean, if the county doesn't do that, we're faced with, I mean, animal growth, we're gonna have to have some kind of animal control, I mean.
We can put that at the public safety complex.
And that's exactly where I'm.
Does the animal control officer, certified animal control officer have to be on duty twenty-four hours? So, we can make it a, uh, whatever hour, whatever hour, normal day or hour, sorry.
You make it Monday, Friday, you don't want to, and if there's an issue on the weekend, well, you can basically, unless they're aggressive, or endanger someone, or, you know, if someone's wrong or handle their animal, then they can come out, and they can leave an, an officer email, and then they can start a phone work, solve an issue.
And it's.
Well, reasonable solution, I mean, that's real, I think you're right, like that, Roger.
Well, I'm not working necessarily to vote on it, I just wanted to put that out, I, I just wanna get that, what it is, I'll make a quick start, not to be the final solution. The purpose is gonna be a police op, an officer, in a place to be paid with, an A C O, like some point in time.
So, do you wanna say, I make a motion in front of that?
Well, that's what I was gonna ask, we need a motion to purchase the, the, um, lock traps, and who's gonna go get them? And we doesn't need that, because we can't open up ours.
We can put them on both of my, hey, play them on me.
So, we're on item in, that the certified animal control officer, if we want to buy traps, we gotta do, do something with this item in, pull item in.
Make a motion that we use existing personnel to set and bait traps for wild dogs, and transport said dogs to, undetermined, to, to a place to be named later. And not exceed four hours worth a day of work or to do that.
Second. You have a motion and a second.
Uh, aye.
Are we still discussing?
We can discuss if you would like.
I just, he, he said, uh, leave your disposal location, and he's, I mean, the location has to be Ranbury, because there are.
Okay, I forgot the name of the place, so that's.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to say.
Say, I made your motion.
I wanna leave it in Ranbury.
Okay, so, we're going to go, we made a motion, so, motion's to that, I'll second it.
Alright.
I, motion's amended, unanimously, need further discussion, we made a motion.
Yes, there's an existing place in, in Fort Worth.
Yes, the Republican courts, we may have to find, literally a volunteer's position, we can't tell somebody to go out there and do this, so.
Sure can, suppose.
Somebody may not wanna deal with taking dogs when they kill.
Well, yeah, I think if dogs of, of works, I would think, uh, the right kind of saying, whether I wanna go take a dog to be possibly using, I was dealing with raging dogs, I mean, that's not fair in your job description, so, that is their choice.
Somebody's gonna have to do it.
I am, I agree, but.
Somebody wants to do it or not. I mean, otherwise, what's the point?
We, we don't have, right now, we're setting up to get a cage, we're making it safe, we're making it our problem, a stopgap. And we'll see, with the employee, maybe somebody in a part of our might wanna do, maybe one of the people might wanna do, I don't know. Just the personnel.
Let's go, let's make your, give clarification.
Are you gonna check and see if they're chipped?
But again, if your dog, if you don't take care of it, it's not our fault. If we have dogs terrorizing kittens, and you let your dog out for just two minutes, and he ran off, and they got caught, sorry. Dogs were terrorizing kittens. The most, uh, praised and condemned, uh, city, uh, part of the city is dog catchers. They're the greatest things in the world, they're the most, uh, the sorriest asshole beast in the world.
Okay, so I got a motion on the floor, use existing personnel to bait and trap wild dogs not to exceed four hours of their minimum duties. Motion in a second, Scott.
No.
Aye. Three, one, motion passes. I would like to pull item M from the table.
Uh, suppose so. What's the wording?
I would.
So, move them back up for discussion.
Second.
Second, motion second.
Aye.
D C.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, we'll bring it back up, item, yeah, discussion of possible action, purchase heavy duty livestock, extra large dog traps.
Make motion to purchase heavy duty livestock, extra large dog traps. You should do one for now. Three, one more.
See, I'm playing motion.
I'll miss it, we'll do, uh, to purchase one large dog trap. Oh, sorry.
I have a motion in a second, for a discussion.
Nine, one, eleven, okay, yes, I'd like to amend a motion to purchase one heavy duty live, extra large dog trap.
Got a motion, amended a motion to buy one extra large dog trap, I have a second for that, amended.
So, you're?
I have a motion in a second, I, yes.
Aye.
Uh, aye, so, we have amended motion now. So, we wanna buy one dog trap, um, an extra large, what's extra large, cause extra large is four hundred dollars for a seventy-two by twenty by twenty-eight.
I think I found one for less than two hundred.
Okay, and a one?
Didn't I give those to you? They had the size on it also.
What, what, dollar, huh? Do you want, you need a direction for the dollar, huh?
Uh, direct to your making decision, I'm not worried about it. I don't know, about seventy-two foot, six foot and a half, five foot, I'm just, uh, busy.
Does it have something, you know, also got rings or something for the bar or whatever, just like built up?
Kind of dog traps that go in the back to impale the dog.
Do you need directions?
So, I've got amended motion on the floor, need further discussion. We're running, oh, aye, amended.
Aye.
Aye.
I, motion passes unanimously, buy one extra large dog trap. Okay, I shall, anything else you wanna discuss, or, do you want a feature, a motion?
It goes to the jury, do you?
I got a motion to adjourn the meeting, I have a second.
Second.
I got a motion, and a second.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously, only three to adjourn the meeting.